Started here. So this is a city council business meeting for Thursday, February 4th, 2021. It is.
Here we go.
Nope, nope. Let's see what I get your mics.
Don't worry about it.
Jeez, Ed.
Look a little out there. Still there, still there.
In the audio setting?
Good, good.
And then hit you separate.
Go down, go down. Oh, no. I'm going to sit in this TV system.
Take some X out of me. That was completely late. X out.
Sorry.
Go ahead and start it up and all.
All right.
We are not being very socially distanced there either.
That's okay.
Okay, so we have a technical difficulty. We will be.
I'm going to open the meeting, right?
Going again here pretty soon.
What you will do is shortly join with video. But don't join with audio.
Ready?
Yep, please.
Oh, done.
Look in, look in.
Funny man. He's in. Right, next one right there.
Okay, so I don't have any audio.
No audio. There.
All right, thank you.
All right.
We can, it's not this computer, right? Mine, this one over here. That should be on.
And I don't, there is a little bit there, but I don't know what it is. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll work on that as we go. So again, city council business meeting Thursday, February 4th, 2021. It is now 6:03 PM. We will call to order. Lindsay, would you call the role?
Councilmember Lester?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Reba?
Here.
Cool?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Here, Tom Phillips?
I am here as well. Okay, so this meeting of the Norwalk City Council on February 4th, 2021 is being held both in person and electronically. Governor Reynolds issued a state of public health disaster effective January 7th, 2021, that lifted the prohibition on indoor gatherings of more than 10 people as long as physical distancing is possible. I issued a proclamation of emergency effective January 15th, 2020, that reopened our public buildings, but to, to provide proper physical distancing, only those presenting to council or, and council are allowed to attend in person. Everyone else is welcome to attend the meeting electronically. As with all electronic meetings, there may be some technical glitches, even more than what we've already experienced. We may talk over each other and there could be a bunch of other issues that occurred during our meeting tonight. I just ask that we all be patient and respectful with each other as we conduct this meeting. For those on the Zoom meeting, you'll notice that your microphones are muted. If you want to speak to an agenda item, go ahead and unmute your mic and speak up during public comment. You can also let us know you have some input by raising your Zoom hand or by flagging us in the chat box. We'll then recognize you during public comment. Please mute your microphone after you've made your comments. Just know that if you don't, one of us will go ahead and get your mute minded or mic muted, which is not a problem. We just hate for you to say something you don't want broadcasted to everyone and then be quoted in a hot mic type situation. You'll also notice that you needed to be allowed into the Zoom meeting tonight. If you are disruptive, we'll give you a warning and ask you to stop. If you are still disruptive, we'll remove you from this meeting and you will not be allowed back in. This is what would happen with a full in-person meeting, so this really isn't a change to any of our procedures. We are streaming this meeting through YouTube. We believe YouTube provides the ability for a much broader audience to view our meetings. To find the ability to comment to the YouTube meeting has been turned off. This is so we don't have a meeting going on within a meeting. We're, we are recording this meeting, so please act accordingly. And finally, I'm only human. I mean, misrecognizing someone, especially, you know, with everything that's going on. We're, we're, we're in council chambers now. If that happens, please interrupt me via the chat box or unmute your mic and say, hey, I'm not going to be at all offended if you do. With that all said, item two on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance. So if you'd please rise and say, "Pledge allegiance." I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Item number three is approval of the agenda. I'd like to move the closed session to after council inquiries and staff updates, so our department heads don't have to wait for closed session to finish. Sorry, I didn't catch that before. Would anybody like to move any of the other consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Livingston, second by Cool. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same. Motion carries. Item number four is welcome of guests and public comment. Thank you for attending tonight. This will be a time that the public can address council. Non-agenda items, we'll give you a three-minute time limit. We can't take action on these tonight since they're not on the agenda. Also, if you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda, now would be the time. Anybody like to address council tonight? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on. So we do have presentation tonight on Norwalk Central, which is SubArea 1 Hughes Crossing. It's a draft concept by Design Consultant. Adam Meckus, Adam, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Is everybody able to hear me? And should I share my screen at this time?
Sure.
Yes, and yes.
I'm going to assume everybody sees the cover of this report.
Yeah.
Know if we're looking at the wrong one. This is really exciting, honestly. This is an extension of part of what you talked about last week as a council in the discussion meeting. And really, you were talking about the catalyst for potentially what Norwalk Central is or could be. Please know, this is a, a description of a potential, not necessarily a specific proposal. The idea here was to bring folks together, the city, potential outside private collaborators, but then also developers of land that own the land there, around a framework concept, an ability to get the big moves correct and understand that the minor details of that in terms of form giving might change over time and allow that flexibility to be a part of the plan. So all of this really started as a question of process. You've gone through a number of processes related to this land over the years, some in particular that unfortunately didn't go through. But now you have an opportunity to, to look at in sort of a new light, in a new, more comprehensive way. And so we're very early on in this process. As you can see from the list of sort of steps, the outline of the process that's here, we're very early on in that process. We've identified a potential for the land. We've looked at the amend amendments and required city hearings that have begun on this. At this point in time, we've now discussed with the developer, we've now discussed with the city, everybody's needs. We've discussed with the private entities that are interested in developing the catalyst project for the site, the community or sort of sports activity center. What are the needs of all of these different parties? And so bringing all of those together into a form has been the goal of this process, making sure that everything fits, the infrastructure is in place. This is nested, obviously, within Norwalk, where we wouldn't be talking about it tonight. But within that, this area called your SubArea 1. Even further, this idea of a Norwalk Central. What is a Norwalk Central? This idea of a walkable hub that brings together commercial opportunity, office opportunity, active opportunity for youth, for adults, for families, for all of your community alike. And it's, it's important that all of that is accessible, not only accessible just by car and sort of the demands of traffic that would come from that, but is walkable within its core. This idea that once you land there, you're part of this entertainment, you're part of this health and sort of wellness environment. There's a few constraints that we started with on this site. Future development to the north, stormwater greenways that we're tying into, your highway corridor to the left of the site, and the existing planned residential that's to the southeast. But all of these really are opportunities, if we look at it, opportunities to hook into, opportunities to connect, opportunities to tie through as we keep going on the project. Two primary programs, the idea of civic public realm that gets inhabited with program, the idea of neighborhoods, the ideas of living and habitat for families. These begin to get public spaces nested even within that. What are these cores? How do they begin to connect not only east and west along a gas line easement that's there? Unfortunately, that really can't be moved. But that gas line easement potentially becomes a greenway. And then we start to look, since that's running east-west, how do we begin to connect north-south? How do we activate the entire site? All of that is, is beginning to look at adjacency and what makes sense to look at a valley edge on the north, a neighborhood core, an active community campus tied to a civic core, residential transitions. It's important to get the architecture to begin to think about how it relates to that, that which is around it. So this plan looks somewhat specific, but what's really important here, what it asks council to think about, is the framework, the streetscapes, the public realm, the scale of the blocks that are being set up here, not only in terms of their flexibility for development over time, whether that be residential or those blocks that have been set up in a commercial light, the ability to get parking to easy access so that cars are able to park quickly, disembark, and you're able to walk inside of the community. You're able to access all of these amenities quickly from primary parking features and spend less time in your car, engage less traffic, have less safety concerns throughout the community. You're able to get more space in that regard by building fewer roads, fewer parking spaces for open green space for stormwater, all of these great things that I know we want. That framework starts to put itself into three dimensions, to look at architectural massing, scale, height, the ability for architecture to read as a consistent urban edge. But that edge can be made up of many things, from office to commercial retail, to localized small shops, to potential public buildings that have been talked about, to sports complexes and even residences, townhomes, warehouses, things of that nature. All of these, if we think about the architecture now, has part of that urban wall, that wall that encloses the public realm room. If we get that framework right along these streetscape corridors, that's what's going to allow us to flex those uses over time, but still hold true to the overall plan. This plan looks at a primary connection coming into the site, minor roads coming off of that. Those in the orange you can see here are designed as what you might call a main street type environment, a commercial mixed-use type street environment. These are parking on both sides of the road, very walkable streetscapes with hopefully commercial frontages to much of their extent. Those in the light blue, the green, these are much more residentially scaled currently in the plan. But all of this is tied to that framework of the main east-west axis. What begins to pull us north-south is when we really look at land use, potentially a civic core tied to a sports campus. And then green spaces that begin to stitch cores into their adjacencies, whether that's sports campus into commercial, taking advantage of the pedestrian traffic that's visiting the site, or whether that's public open space tied into neighborhoods, taking advantage of opportunities for youth to get access to the open realm. As we look at sort of one in, in a little bit more detail, the sort of civic core portion of the site, last week, the building you were talking about, that was the L-shaped sports complex building, we're going to get into that a little more here, is right adjacent to this space. This idea that there are many entries to the site, these sort of arrival moments, but it's about stitching the programs next to each other. How can commercial come out onto a small event space? That small event space be adjacent to an expansion opportunity, flexible lawn? That play opportunity is next to a place where an older sibling might have basketball practice in the evening, but the younger sibling could be right outside that door with the parent on the playground and yet still adjacent to the lawn. All of these are trying to get adjacent relationships to co-opt with each other, rather than just building one thing and letting it be what it is, trying to get adjacent opportunities to be more than just their, some of their parts. We've gone through with engineers that have been involved in the project for years now. Took a look at a, an initial grading plan for the concept, just making sure that in general, the grades of the site could be handled, the drainage, the stormwater. And in this case, in generally, it, it proves through. All of that is going to go through more detailed design as you progress forward with the developers of the site. Again, that three-dimensional vision, this is the, the more residential area to the north. I don't want to go into too much detail about this tonight, obviously for you, but in this overview, the key relationships are that valley edge on the very north of your site, the residential tied into the commercial, how we connect those moments and gradually use different densities of residential to begin to address that relationship to the commercial core. But then also north-south, how those central areas connect through and always are addressed that public realm, getting townhomes holding the edge of the primary streets so that we get a consistency of that urban frontage. The civic core itself, there's been talk of potential library. There's a reason I say potential rather than proposed. It's an idea. It's not a specific notion at this time. This idea that a public entity might have proximity to a civic park, that civic park at the same time has proximity to this orange plaza, the playground there, the community center. All of these entities begin to front onto the same public realm. They begin to build the value, build the energy on top of each other and draw that energy back into the private commercial realm, the retail areas that are going to benefit from that traffic, from that activity that's centralized in one zone. This is just an illustration at this point, this idea of beginning to look at private entities on the left, things like restaurants, food and beverage, building on the value of a public park. At the same time, a potential public building extending its performance opportunity for events, music, things like that onto a public park. And then on the right, again, the sports venue. If you have a large building there, there's easy things to do with things like garage doors, to now even be able to open up interiors of buildings to the outdoor realm. When we start to do things like think about where roads and where parking really should be, you'll notice in this image that you're able to have all of this great public space without a car necessarily being between the child and the building or any of the other realms. This goes back to what we were talking about last week, that community core in the sports complex, the ability for it to potentially expand. The way this has been designed is that all of these spaces are flexible in their notion as long as the street framework generally holds its scale, its size, its layout for parking. We can flip one building use from an, from a single use to another, from sports to retail, from retail to expanded sports building. But the fundamental framework has been designed so that it still works either way. We took a little bit more detail looking at some of the buildings that were a bit more difficult to handle. There's one of the streetscape realms where getting parking directly adjacent to those commercial buildings was very difficult. In that case, it's actually completely feasible that the ground floor of that building can have retail frontage still and tuck parking underneath so that you don't even necessarily see it from the public realm. It's not to say that this is a specific construction solution at this time, but that these dimensions that the streets have been laid out on have been thought through. We can get parking in there. We can still get retail frontage, active frontages within the buildings. We've identified different uses like cafes, office bays, incubator retail, things that generally have proven out in this market. We've talked to a number of different leasing folks that are very experienced in this area, in this type of market, and they believe that this is incredibly viable for the time being. Again, just understanding that sectionally, this is the main core street there. And I'm going to go back to the plan here in a second. But what I want to get folks to understand is that there's a set of stairs between the public buildings. And so the last thing I'm really going to end on is this 3D here. That core street is here, that mixed-use core street. The park space is actually one story above that. And so you're not only activating the ground floor and commercial street, but you're actually activating the second story of a potential public building. So you're actually getting a dual benefit there. You're getting the parking underneath out of the way and you're getting the public realm being able to center on that open space. So hopefully that hasn't gone on too detailed or too long. Happy to answer questions or discuss.
So Adam, this is Stephanie Reba. So you're saying that the, the green space is only going to be able to be accessed by a stairway?
Because we talked about that as a public building, there's the opportunity there to look at the parking scenario differently in its regard. And so we looked at that as a specific opportunity to do something new, to create this idea of a Spanish Steps type environment, something that really created a different public realm in this entity. The grade on the site right now with the gas line there, there's a lot of grade on that site, actually 15 to 30 feet in different locations of difference. So we're taking advantage of that grade change to try to not have to fill as much of the north end of the site by allowing the building to essentially be the retaining wall. On either end, in this sort of blue or green, you can walk right up, completely ADA accessible. There's simply the entity of that stairs on either side of the library experience.
Questions for Adam?
Did I hear you say that the cars are parked underneath the potential public building, the city building?
There is a small, there is an accessibility of parking under there. Dimensionally, it works in that zone to do that, if that's the ADA parking proximity in that regard.
I like the concept of the approach. This is it. And, you know, because it can get some flexibility there. We all know that things don't always end up exactly the way you think they're going to be when they start, you know? So I appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that you generally, I think, designed this around the geographic location. What we're dealing with is for is the ground itself there now at lays and the mixed uses that we've got for different parts of that area, you know? So I appreciate that, how that's incorporated. And I guess just seeing it for the first time, you know, I'm sitting there going, whoa, there's a lot there. So I guess I'll need to absorb it more and understand it better, you know, as we go along. But I like the approach that you've taken on how you're looking at this, you know? And that, that probably is the best angle for us to use as we try to develop this. So I appreciate that and look forward to understanding better a little bit.
Yeah, it's definitely something that you need to kind of chew on for a little bit and digest.
Yeah, I think so. There's, there's a lot there, you know?
Yeah.
And this, you know, when, whenever we do this project, it'll be, I think, the biggest project we've ever done in this town that I know of.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's a big thing. It's nice, but it's a big thing. So we, we ought to think it through and take some time looking at it, too.
Want to get it right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
But I appreciate it.
I'm also very impressed with what you've done. You, I'm very happy you listened to us, heard us when we're talking about getting the mixed use in there, having it walkable. I mean, this is, I really like what I'm seeing. I haven't looked into it in great detail, but I like what I'm seeing. The community center, so is that, is that the building that would combine? I mean, is that the building that we're talking about, whether it should be all city-owned or leased? Is part of that building to be owned by the other entity? At one point, there were two parts to that.
Yep. But does this have all one building? There's the one that I've got bordered here in orange right now, which was sort of the focus, right? Maybe it had basketball courts in it, maybe it didn't, maybe it expands. But there's also this block here in white, just to the side of that, that would potentially be the totally privately held. I'd sort of call these volumes at this point, in my mind, of the way I've been working with it, right? It's about getting functional volume into the development that can be flexed in its use. So that may end up being, you know, a day school, a nursery school, something down in the future. All of these are designed so that hopefully those uses could be developed over time if something might change.
Okay, thank you. Good work.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just add, I mean, I've been on the subcommittee talking about this, but for purposes of the public record, this is exactly what we've been talking about. We've discussed and re-discussed and added and subtracted. And I appreciate all the work that you did on this, Adam. I think it was a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jackie. It's been really great working with all of you, Luke and Holly and Paris as well. And, you know, even Mayor, we've, we've gotten your comments throughout this. It's really been enjoyable and I hope we can, we can keep seeing this take shape. It's not something that happens overnight and I think you all know that. It's going to take long term.
Have no other comments? I'll just say, it, it looks great. It's like it's, it's, it's neat to see, to hear everybody's ideas and then to see it kind of in one diagram and kind of start to, start to pull things together. So it's, it's, it is exciting to see.
Especially with such a change in elevation. I didn't realize there was, there was so much of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it runs off.
They changed things. Looks good.
Agreed. So Adam, thank you for the presentation. Thanks for putting this together and it's going to be fun getting through this.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor. I'm happy to stay on if you need me or I'm happy to drop off as well tonight.
Whatever you would like to do. All right, so moving on, we'll go to item number six, which is our consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight, we have approved the January 21st, 2021 minutes of the regular city council meeting. We have approved the January 21st, 2021 minutes of the special city council meeting. Have expenditures, tax abatements. We're going to set fiscal year 2022 capital improvement plan budget public hearing for February 18th, 2021. Have resolution approving the purchase of a new public works vehicle. We have resolution setting the date of February 18th, 2021 for public hearings on proposals to enter into general obligation loan agreements and to borrow money thereunder. Have resolution approving an agreement with ATAC Recycling for the 2021 residential e-waste disposal program. Have resolution approving an agreement with Iron Mountain for participation in the 2021 residential paper shredding program. We have resolution approving an agreement with SPI Des Moines for participation in the 2021 residential white goods program. We have resolution approving an agreement with Metro Waste Authority for participation in the 2021 scrap tire removal program. Those will all happen in May. Those will all happen in May. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
By Baker, second by Lester and Reva. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Reva?
Yes.
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, can I make a comment on one of the topics? It's not a question. I'm just going to make the comment.
Sure.
The vehicle, you know, that that couple of folks has that they're sending down the road to two thousand and three. Today I text the council members from the two thousand and two council and thanked them for their wise decision. When they appropriated two thousand more dollars so I could purchase an SUV. And at the time I had to reassure them that it would have a longer lifespan than a sedan. And it would give us more utility. And I told him, hey, you made a good decision because today, right, it's ending its service life.
There you go.
And you wouldn't get that out of the sedan, would you chief? That baby wouldn't even have made it on the road.
We wouldn't even get that out of the sedan or out of an SUV now.
Anyway, I I thought that was kind of interesting.
Didn't they make them in metal? Didn't they make vehicles in metal back in two thousand and three?
They they made them a little different, didn't they, in the year today? I agree with you.
Alright, so the motion carries. Item seven is old and new business for consideration discussion and possible action. Item A. Is a public hearing to approve the proposed maximum property tax levy for general fund liability, property and self insurance costs. Uh, and special revenue levies for employee benefits. So we'll open up the public hearing at six thirty three P M. So by law, if our budget goes over two percent, goes up over two percent.
A hundred and two percent.
Hundred and two percent.
Sorry, I saw that in my agenda.
Alright.
Hundred and two percent.
Hundred and two percent. Excuse me. Even though we're lowering the property tax levy, we still have to have this public hearing so we can get feedback from the from the public. About our budget. So Jean, I will turn this over to you.
Okay, thank you. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, as you mentioned, the Iowa legislature approved creating an additional public hearing. This would be if a city increases voter. If it increases property tax dollars by more than a hundred and two percent, not two percent, I apologize for that. Of the dollars that were requested in the previous budget year. And that would be for all property tax levies, um, other than debt service and levies that are voter approved. So it doesn't apply to those. The total amount of the increase that we were looking at is two hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Two hundred and seventy seven thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars or five percent. That was our growth, so we're essentially um requesting all of um Norwalk's growth. A hundred and eighty seven thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars of that would go to the city's general fund. Fifteen thousand would go for our property and liability insurance. And then the remaining seventy five thousand would go for our trust and agency levy. And that includes our FICA, which is social security and Medicare, our health insurance, our IFRS. And workers' compensation and unemployment insurance. And that's all I have.
Alright. Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments on this item?
We have not.
Okay, do we have any public comment from anybody on the phone? Or on the Zoom call? Hearing none. We will go ahead and close public hearing at six thirty five P M. Item B is a resolution approving the proposed maximum property tax levy. For general fund liability, property and self insurance costs and special revenue levies for employee benefits. So we just had our public hearing on this item. Jean, do you have anything else to add?
Just that this resolution requires a two thirds vote of the council to be approved.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or comments from council?
Hey, you know, I I just would like to point out, Mayor, that we're reducing our rate of asking. With this, right? But just to remind the public that we can't control tax dollar amounts because some of this is affected. By the evaluation done of the person's property from year to year. That's beyond our control, so we can't set that. And there are other entities that rely on property taxes beside us. We can't control how much they have.
Right.
But this is a conscious effort, I think, by staff and by the council. To look at a way to reduce our tax rate. Which uh by passing this, and hopefully we will, it will reduce that tax rate. But the end product may or may not be reduced taxes.
Correct.
All the variables.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
That's a good point. Any other comments? Council? Do we have any public comment? Okay, so can I get a motion that the maximum property tax dollars for the effective tax levies for fiscal year twenty two shall not exceed the following total? Total maximum levy for effective property tax levies for fiscal year twenty two will be eleven dollars ninety point two one nine cents. For general fund liability and property insurance, FICA, IFRS, and other employee benefits as allowed by state law. And the maximum property tax dollars requested in the total maximum levy for effective property tax levies for fiscal year twenty two. Represents greater than one hundred and two percent of the maximum property tax dollars requested for the current fiscal year. Would anybody like to make that motion?
Motion.
I will second that.
Okay, so I got a motion by Livingston, a second by Cool. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reva?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Item seven is a, item seven C, sorry, is a public hearing regarding a rezoning request for. One zero zero eight North Avenue to establish an infill P U D. So we'll open up the public hearing. At six thirty eight P M. So this is an area across the street and to the south of the library. Luke, Paris, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, yes, this is uh the house that's currently across the library, uh yellow house. The concept here would be, uh, the house would be uh torn down and we are looking at a proposed rezoning. To one of our infill P U Ds that we just approved a couple of meetings ago. To allow for uh residential, a different residential project, product to go in there. Right now, it's uh it's kind of an interesting scenario. Um, the properties zoned R two, so the lots that exist there could be. Duplexes, um, and there are four lots. There's actually just the one house that's showing there. And if you look on Beacon even, it just looks like one lot. But interestingly, this was part of the original town plat of the city of Norwalk. Um, and I've reviewed that with Jim Dougherty, uh, our city attorney, and we've determined that plat is, all those lots are still legal and valid. So. We have four lots right now that exist that would be allowed to have uh duplexes on each one, um, even though they are quite small. Um, and what's being proposed here by the developer, uh, Peter Cutler, is five single family lots. That you can see there. We started out, there was a that uh. There might be a townhome project that they would try to do here. So the P U D actually allows for an R three as well. But I know as the developer has gotten into looking at what really works there more. Concurrently, as we've worked on the P U D, they've moved away from that. So um, the the P U D language does say and has criteria for an R three. So if that's something that i- is concerned, I don't think that um, the developer has any issue with it just being R one. So that's what they're proposing to build. Um, so you'd having a general uh. Density of dwelling units decreasing from the proposed, the the allowed eight that could happen now down to the five. That they're proposing there. Our P and Z, we had a pretty lengthy discussion on a couple of topics. The first one was the property owner to the east of lot four on this map. Uh, they have a garage and and some of their structures are very close to their lot line. And I think of one or two foot off their lot line. So they were concerned that if there was a five foot setback there, they felt like that was maybe a little too close. So we've went through and the P and C, their their ultimate motion was to change that to an eight foot setback. So that would give a total of ten feet of separation between um the structures, which is kind of our minimum separation that. We require just to have a standard uh building built. Um, we usually want things ten feet apart. The other thing our P and Z had a a good discussion about was the driveway access and just concerns about uh North Avenue. And driveway access. Um, it was ultimately recommended uh by the P and Z without uh any change to that. But we did have a fourth revote there. So just so you know that there was a lot of discussion, some um disagreement, I guess, um, on. What we should do with those driveways and if if that was too many onto North Avenue. Ultimately, if you look at like the total traffic volume of North Avenue right now and the amount of traffic that those four lots would add. I mean, it's less than like one percent of the total traffic there. So it's not so much of a traffic volume thing. I think there was just some thoughts of. The driveway cuts out on the North Avenue. In addition to the discussion that we had, it's the the Huntoun family is who owns that property to the east. I did just have a discussion yesterday uh with uh Rod Losner. He owns the property south of lot five. And expressed a little bit of a similar concern. His his garage is also close and driveway is close to the property line. That lot was already wider, so you can see that building was already kind of set in the middle and it's already about ten feet off the lot line. But we worked with uh the developer uh over the last day or so, um, and he was okay with moving that uh setback line um to eight feet. So that's not currently referenced on this um concept. Luke, I did send you an email with the updated concept if you do want to pull it up in your email. Um, but also it's doing is moving that southern uh. Side setback line um from five feet to eight feet. So just making sure again that we would have a a maximum ten foot of separation. Between structures there. Um, so if, I guess, just to note to that kind, that idea, that's not referenced in the P U D right now either. So if that's something that uh council would want to um require of them, we'd need that in the motion to specifically make that change to the P U D. That'll take any questions or um we can move on and I I believe Peter is on the line as well from the developer. To provide any other comments.
Luke Elliott had sent me an updated. What I believed to be the P U D. He did not specify what changes were made. Just said it was a small one, so it is in the packet.
Okay, so that probably did get in there then. Okay, my apologies, so.
Okay, Lindsay, have we received, have we received any written or oral comments on this?
I have not, other than what's in the packet already.
What's in the packet already? Okay, thank you. Do we have any other public comment on this item? Okay, hearing none. We will go ahead and close public hearing at six forty four P M. So item D is a first reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Norwalk, Iowa by rezoning one zero zero eight North Avenue. From R two, one and two family residential. To the center north infill plan unit development. Okay, that was lots for me to say. Uh, so we just had our public hearing on this item. Uh, Luke, do you have anything else to add?
I just wanted to confirm uh what Lindsay mentioned. Uh, I did pull up the P U D that is in the agenda and it does have the. Eight foot setback on that southern boundary identified in section eleven um under item A setbacks. Sub item six, I guess. So if you wanted to go see that, but I just wanted to confirm that that is in there, so we would not need a motion to change that.
Okay, so uh any discussion, comments, or questions from council?
I'd like to uh uh say one thing that was not brought up in the planning and zoning meeting. This infill plan. This whole thing, this is a really good example of where we're taking an abandoned house. And we're replacing that with over a million dollars worth of uh new residential homes. This is, this is kind of neat to see something that's working like it's supposed to.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, Brian. I agree.
Yeah, the other thing I like about this too is those are affordable homes, Mayor, more affordable homes. And that's something that we've been working hard to try to get more of in the community here.
For sure.
So it looks like a pretty good use of space to me and and by the negotiations, they've accommodated the neighbors. You know how that's to be set up. Yeah, so.
Alright.
Oh, I'll move it.
Okay, so.
Second.
Alright, so the motion is to approve the first reading of the ordinance is detailed on page four of the council packet. Is that correct?
Yes.
Alright, so motion by Livingston, second by Cool. Any further discussion? Alright, Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reva?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, item E is resolution defining scope for the North Avenue Rehab Phase Two Redwood Drive to Orchard Hills Elementary Project. So after discussion with our engineer, staff would like to proceed with the rehab of North Avenue from Redwood Drive west to Orchard Hills. Wayne, you got anything to add?
Yeah, I can just give you a little detail. When we brought this forward originally, council had requested we do a bid alternate for a turn lane at Orchard Hills. After that meeting, we did some more research and, you know, we kind of spelled out some of the reasoning in the packet there. After we've done our research, we're proposing to move forward without the turn lanes at this time. We think it's a, the turn lane, it it isn't needed, the volume isn't there, and when the time comes and the volume is there. We're probably going to need turn lanes or a third lane at additional locations in that corridor. So we're looking at a different type of project. This is an overlay where we get a certain type of contractor, adding lanes is a different type of contractor. It's not set up well for a bid alternate situation. And uh, so we're proposing to move forward without it at this time.
Discussion, questions, comments from council?
I have a question. This is Stephanie. Um, Wayne, is this similar to then? Like the overlay on Beardsley where we're not expecting it to be a twenty year road, but just trying to get it. Some to ten years out?
That's exactly.
Where we're going to widen it.
Correct, Stephanie. We're hoping to get ten years out of it. The North Avenue corridor study that Snyder Associates completed uh probably a year ago. They estimated ten years before we had reached the point where the capacity would require a third lane through the corridor. So it is really setting up well, I I think, for an overlay right now.
Okay, thank you.
So I talked, uh, I think to Luke for quite a while about this. I um appreciate the. The work and the effort. City staff, Wayne, you guys went to, I appreciate your recommendation. I I appreciate your position on that. My position hasn't changed. Um, I still want a third lane there. I'm still not in support of. Doing the work now um to redo it later. I understand what you're saying and I'm. Uh, I respect your position. So. That's that.
Alright.
Would we expect to see any other work done on the shoulders out there as a part of that or?
Yeah, the scope does include adding two foot paved shoulders in that area, similar to how we did through the S curves and heading west up the corporate limits. We added shoulder there. This project would add paved shoulders.
Okay, thank you.
Make it a little wider.
Other discussion, questions, comments from council?
Looks like the way to go to me. If we don't need a turn lane until about the time this project's going to end, it's, you know, useful life. It's probably a smart way to schedule it in and we would just uh do this in when we build a new one. I'm good with it.
Alright, do you have any public comment? Hearing none. Can I get a motion that the North Avenue Rehab Phase Two Redwood Drive to Orchard Hills Elementary Project? Is approved to be designed and constructed without a turn lane at Orchard Hills Elementary? Okay, I got a motion by Cool. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second?
That's what you get for being in Florida.
Ow.
Discussion. Hearing none. Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reva?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
No.
Okay, that motion carries. Item F is a resolution approving engineering services for Northwest Service Truck Sewer Extension. So this will be to take the sanitary sewer that's signature property is currently installing, and extend that pipe to the lift station at Legacy Golf Course. Right now, we're going to approve that V and K provide engineering services to design and oversee the construction. Wayne, anything to add?
Engineering contract, correct, is design, construction, and there'd be some easement, negotiation, and acquisition for the project. This is a project that staff is excited about. This will open up some development. Eventually, this is the sewer that would go to the S-curves and serve that area as well. And then this will also allow us to get rid of the lift station in Legacy Golf Course, which is, it's just a critical asset, kind of a area of concern. If that lift station ever fails, we have, you know, sewer backing up. So it'd be great to get rid of the lift station there.
Any questions, comments, discussion from council?
When we pull out that lift station, is that equipment that we'll just use someplace else then, is that where it goes?
We have, we'll, we'll save the generator off it, you know, for backup power source. We might be able to use that somewhere else, pumps. I'm not sure, Ed, how much of that's going to be salvageable. We'll have to look into that. I know the pumps a lot of times are real specific, depending on the, the head, the, how far are you trying to push it? They're designed for a certain head pressure on it.
Sure.
There is value to it. I don't know if we're going to reuse it, but I think we'd be able to either liquidate it or use it somewhere.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council? Any public comment? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve V and K to provide engineering services for the design and construction of the Northwest Service Truck Sewer Extension?
Motion. Second.
Okay, motion by Livingston, second by Reva. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Reva?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Council inquiries and staff updates. Jim?
Nothing.
All right, David?
Nothing.
Jackie?
No, nothing.
Ed?
Just one comment, Mayor.
What's that?
I had my first coronavirus shot the other day.
Oh, good.
And all I had was a little twinge here in the arm. That's it.
Yeah.
Pretty good deal. And glad to have that one over with. But I understand the second one, you know, twenty-eight days from now, I'm not that good. But we're moving along.
My mother-in-law and sister-in-law both had their second shot, and it was a non-event for them. So.
Hey, good deal. I'm glad to hear that. Thanks for telling us.
That way. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Luke Paris?
Let's let you know, we had another steering committee meeting this afternoon for the comprehensive plan, at which point we took a look at kind of a first draft for a future land use plan, and where that planning boundary would kind of extend. So that was pretty exciting. They're going to take some of our comments, clean that up a little bit. And then the next month or so, we hope to be able to release that out as kind of an online map that will walk you through things and get comments and everything. So that'll be available to council and the general public here hopefully in March, about a month.
Awesome. Thank you. Wayne?
An update on a couple of projects that we've been working on for quite a while. The Colonial Regional Detention Pond, the engineers have identified the land we need for construction of the pond. We're going to request a contract from McClure Engineering to help us not negotiate, but help us coordinate the land acquisition and transfer for the land we need to complete that. So it is moving forward. It's good to get some traction again on that project. The Western Feeder Mine, we're still trying to acquire easement for the meter pit. Pipe's been going in, that project's, the construction's going great for that portion. We need to get a meter vault in the ground where we need a easement from a landowner. We were gaining some traction on that, and now it stalled, and we've hit a more substantial roadblock there. So it's slowing down. We're still working on it. Des Moines Water Works is trying really hard to get a deal done, and hopefully that moves forward. And Ed, obviously, you know, that Ford Explorer will be on GovDeals if you ask him. I'll keep you in the loop.
What year is it?
Two thousand and three.
Oh, I see. I got a five, so it can't be used.
Nice.
What's that? Sorry, you can tell it's metal, but all the rust.
Thanks, Wayne. Chief Coburn?
I have nothing tonight. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Chief Staples?
The officers had, well, thirteen out of nineteen officers elected to get the vaccine. Eleven have had it. So far, the remaining two are scheduling appointments. Nobody's had the second shot yet. But interestingly, I read a study today that the Los Angeles Fire Department that has three thousand five hundred firefighters were getting twenty positive tests a day until they started vaccinating their people. And now they're down to about zero a day. So vaccine works.
You have to be really careful on that second shot, so you don't have them all take it on the same day.
So we did have six of us taken yesterday. And the second round will not be in a mass group. It will be individually at Medica North, as they have openings. So we should be fine that way.
Yeah, that'd be good.
But I would say Medica North took care of us. They reached out to me first and offered to give the police officers the shot as soon as February first rolled around, and they did that. So.
Great.
That's all.
All right. Thank you. Jean Kelly?
Hi. We'll be bringing the CIP to you guys in a couple of weeks, and another resolution for issuing debt for our general obligation bonds for next year. And then a month from today, and I can't believe it, we'll have the full budget to you and hopefully approved. And working with Holly on the sports campus and trying to come up with some viable options for you guys to consider.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Holly?
Yep, just a couple of quick things. I think you all probably received the email I sent out about the Kosovo Independence Celebration Week. So those are all coming up here the week of the fourteenth, fifteenth. Kosovo's elections are on the fourteenth, so they'll have a new parliament and president. And as I've mentioned before, our friend Ramush is running, and he was the former prime minister. So everybody wished him luck. He'll be great. He'd be great if he gets elected. Other than that, I'll try to get back out to everybody. Maybe me and Jackie can get together when, if she ever has any free time, and we can plan a little something better for our Norwalk Kosovo celebration on the seventeenth, which is kind of the big day. You know, everybody's split off because of COVID instead of going out to Camp Dodge. So maybe we'll do something at City Hall or something at a local restaurant, but we want to gather a little bit if we can safely. So there's that. And then, like Jean said, we will be coming back to you guys on the eighteenth at that council meeting with your options as requested. Luke and Jean and I have been digging deep into the numbers for the potential scenarios for owning versus leasing with this sports campus project. So we should have some good scenarios and options for you guys to take a look at, so we can help those guys get moving forward on it. And then I think the last thing is, is just in case you notice, the website has been down for a little bit today, of course, on a council day. So lots of Facebook chatter there, but we're all over it. So we're just waiting on the technicians with the website company to get it fixed. So. And then on Monday, they will have our refreshed website that they've been working on. So you'll notice some changes for the better with our kind of new, at least, homepage on the website on Monday. So I think that's it.
Cool. Thank you. Jean Bosch?
Good evening. I don't have a report tonight.
Okey-dokey. Robin?
Yeah, just wanted to let you guys know that we are working on several grants. And as we match those with the multiple projects that we have going on for this upcoming year, we'll bring those forward to you guys and let you know. And then also, summer employment applications are open on NeoGov for all of the positions for Parks and Recreation. So we have lifeguards, swim instructors, mowers, landscaping, and then complex tournament workers. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Lindsay?
No.
Nope. Stephanie?
Nothing.
Brian?
I've got nothing.
Okay, Luke Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. I have a few quick things. First, Supervisor Aaron DeCook stopped by my office and gave me a little insight on their budget process. And he indicated that the county, things are going well. He was pretty upbeat, and they are anticipating a reduction in their levy as well.
Good.
Next up, North River Interceptor. Wayne and I received a draft alignment of that first leg of the North River Interceptor from Tony, our city engineer. So we're looking forward to taking a look at that. Their next step is they'll start to have conversations with property owners of where we will need to obtain easements. And then finally, irrigation rate adjustments. We have been digging into those details. Staff has analyzed that information to death. Then we went to Des Moines Water Works to get input from them on the process. They gave us some good insight. Next up is the Admin Policy Committee, then the Finance Committee, and finally, that'll come to City Council. And our goal is to have something to you and a different rate schedule adopted prior to July first.
Okay, that's all I have. Awesome. Thank you. Only thing I have is February thirteenth, we will be doing community chat. We will be in here and virtual. We're going to try to do both. So either join us online or join us in here.
We'll be virtually in here then, I'm here.
Virtually in here.
All right.
Kind of like we are right now.
Cool.
All right. So getting back to item seven, G is a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one dot five one J to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price to govern, to the governmental bodies. So Jim, is this a valid reason to go into closed session?
Yes, it is.
Okey-dokey. Can I get a motion to enter into closed session?
Motion.
Motion.
How about a second?
Second.
All right. So I got a motion and a second. Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Reva?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Okay, we will be going into closed session. And so we'll start that hearing just a little bit. Everybody's gone.
All right.